Okay, the mics, the mics are live.
Okay.
They can hear us complain about the, that's fine. Everyone else, let's do it.
They understand sometimes.
Did you see the, like, the tech students that one time? And they, they got, how many cars?
Here we go.
And drove forty-five.
Good evening and welcome to the Spaulding Boarding, Board of Commissioners' regular meeting. It is Monday, January third, two thousand and twenty-three, at six P. M. Happy holidays to all of you, all for the new year. At this time, if you follow with the agenda, you'll notice that Will Dos is, uh, to say the invocation. He was unexpectedly called away, and Reverend Brandon Fitted from Carver Road Baptist Church is here this evening to deliver the invocation, and that will be followed by Commissioner Dutton giving the pledge of the flag. Reverend Brandon.
Thank you, thank you for invitation to be here, and, uh, my prayer is not just over this meeting, but it just goes to support you guys and what all you guys do, so, thank you very much. And, uh, I just want to read this scripture before we get started, it's age-old, but it's a new year, and the Lord says in Jeremiah twenty-nine eleven, "I know the plans I have for you," declares the Lord. Plans for welfare, not for evil, to give you a hope and a future. Um, then you will call upon me and pray to me, and I will hear you. You will seek me and find me when you seek me with all your heart. So I pray that our government never stops seeking the wisdom of our heavenly Father, amen?
Amen.
Let's go to our heavenly Father in prayer. Lord, as we, uh, we ask for your blessings over this meeting tonight, Lord, I pray for County Commissioners, Board, every single person that sits here and represents you, um, as a position of influence, Lord, I pray that you give them wisdom and insight beyond their years, Father. Um, I pray for the people who brought their burdens. Um, you tell us to cast our burdens upon you because you care for us, Lord, and so I pray, as this board hears, as, as people share, and as, um, they go through the business, I pray that you not only bless it, but you be in and through it, and you allow us to see where you're at work, and allow us to join you in that, Father God, and I just thank you so much for your wisdom, and then you say in your word to trust in you and seek not, um, seek not our own wisdom, lean not on our own understanding, and all our ways acknowledge you, and you will make our path straight. So I pray, um, for this government, I pray for every single decision that is made, um, be backed not only by your support, but by your understanding, Father, knowing that you, you want what's best for your people, and so I pray that they, these decisions reflect that in all that they say and all they do, and if, um, all God's people agree with that prayer in Jesus' name, would you say amen?
Amen.
Amen, thank you.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen. This is a little different Board of Commissioners' meeting that we will go through annually. We have to appoint a number of positions, and we're gonna start with that, and we start with the, uh, county attorney running the meeting to appoint the chairman and the vice chairman.
Is there a motion to open the floor for nominations for chairman?
Motion is to open the nominations for chairman.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, signify by raising your hand? Any opposed? Thank you. Nominations?
I'd like to nominate Clay Davis as chairperson.
Second.
Are there any other nominations? Is there a motion to close nominations?
Motion to close nominations.
Second?
Second.
Um, any discussion? If not, all in favor, signify by raising your hand? Five-zero. All right, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, first, let me say, uh, thank you. This is a true honor, and it's a high privilege for me, and I truly understand that, and I appreciate that. Uh, we're now going to do the election for the vice chairman. Uh, do I have a nomination for vice chairman?
I'll nominate James Dutton as vice chair.
I have a nomination for, uh, chairman, uh, vice chairman, uh, Dutton. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second, any more discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand? Five-zero, thank you. All right, now we're gonna go through a series of appointments. Appointment of, uh, Dr. Steve Ledbetter as the county manager for calendar year two thousand and twenty-three. Do I have a motion?
Yeah, motion to appoint.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion?
He's doing a fantastic job.
All those, yes, I agree, fantastic job, all those in favor signify by raising your hand? Five-zero. Item number two, appointment of Kathy Gibson as the county clerk for calendar year two thousand and twenty-three. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, and I have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand? Five-zero. Appointment of Dr. Steve Ledbetter as the deputy county clerk for calendar year two thousand and twenty-three. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand? Five-zero. Extension of the county attorney contract. Do I have a motion to extend the contract while we take time to get the, uh, RFP completed?
Mister, Mister Chairman, I would like to make a motion to table, well, not to table, but, um, for, for this, for the sake of, uh, for the sake of being able to have a discussion, I'll make a motion to approve the, um, extension.
All right, I have a motion to approve. I have a second, discussion?
So I, we knew last year that we were going to, um, bid out the contract for county attorney and zoning attorney, and maybe even human resources. We have an obligation to notify those three organizations that we are not renewing their contract. This is essentially what happens, you know, so, but we didn't do it. First of all, we didn't do it, and then next, we didn't do what we needed to do, because we knew that these contracts were due in January, and now we sitting here asking these people to wait to do their business while we take however loan that we want to take to figure that out. I don't think that that's fair, I think that the people who are, we've appointed in the past have done an excellent job for us, it's not their fault that we didn't get our stuff done before now. So my suggestion, um, and I will rescind my motion, um, my suggestion is that we go ahead and do our annual appointments until we figure out how we're gonna bid this out, because clearly there is no game plan, and these are people's businesses and livelihood. It's not fair, we wouldn't do that to anybody else, why would we do that to them? So I rescind my motion to extend.
It's been seconded, you can.
Can I rescind my second? She rescinds her first?
Okay.
Stephanie, can it, I think you, I think you both have to do it.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so, uh, do I have a motion to?
Hold on, I, well, we don't have any motions, but, um, what, when will the RFPs be ready? Like, how long will that take?
Uh, they will be ready at the middle of the month.
Okay, and then how?
Isn't that what we called, it was the?
January tenth.
Yep, January tenth.
So January tenth is the last date for us to receive bids?
That's correct, and then there's a committee that is put together, and then we'll score those, and then notify the, uh, board on.
And, and what all is being bid out?
Uh, currently, there are three things that are under bid, zoning attorney, county attorney, and the phone system.
Okay, so we're not, we're not, I, uh?
Phone system? Okay.
So we're not bidding out the whole of the I.T., just the phone system?
Correct, we're not bidding out the total of the I.T., because the I.T. contract that Mike Windham and I have been working on right now is about this thick. Um, we wanna make sure that we get this right when we put it out for bid.
So?
They are not under contract, they are under an M.S.A., so they're not a part of the, um, the appointments.
The phone system is not, are you saying the phone system isn't under the I.T. contract?
It, it was, yes, we are pulling it out and making it a separate contract.
Why?
The cost of the phone is, we're, when we initially put the information out for, um, for a request for quote, it came back in almost ninety thousand dollars less than what we're currently spending annually. Uh, so we pulled that out separately to do a separate bid for the phone system, uh, and we are working through the details for the contract for the I.T., because we wanna make sure that we get this right the first time we put it out. We don't want to have to come back and do this again for, uh, for two thousand and twenty-three.
So, Mr. Chairman, this is, this is what my concern is with, with that process, not that we don't need it, is that this, the phone system that we have ne- now was just installed last year. Yes, right before William left, we got a new phone system, and for weeks, people couldn't talk because they weren't connected. So I have a problem with, over the last five years, six years, we have had two phone systems. So, yeah, count, taking it out, and it's only ninety thousand or a hundred thousand dollars, is a, whatever it is. What I'm saying is that, I hear you saying we need to get it right, but is getting it right, moving a phone system away from its, uh, the computer system that it networks with, I mean, these are, I, I'm not an I.T. person, but I know what has gone wrong in the past, and I just, you know, I, if we're going to do this, let's not pick and choose, and let's do it properly, let's, let's have the RFP written up, we get someone to do it for each job, or whatever job description. That, to me, this is just rather haphazard, and it's, it's not in order. I don't, you know, this is supposed to be a board of order.
Wait, and, and let me comment, it's actually.
Would y'all, make sure you got the microphones close enough to you so everybody can hear you?
It, it's actually moving us back too, because if I'm mistaken, we're not meeting anymore this month, correct?
That's correct.
So that moves us to February.
Maybe the first meeting.
So that's, that's, it's moving it back more so, I know what we're talking about, we have the retreats in between here, right?
Yes.
So, you know, we've got things, you know, we're, we're doing, so, um, I'm, I'm kinda like Commissioner Flowers with this. I mean, I'm okay with just kinda moving these along this year, what have you, and if there's any changes that need to be made, then we, we had a lot going on this year, okay? Best to toward the end of the year, you know, where maybe, you know, we, we were not able to do it. So, you know, instead of extending it, I'm like, let's go ahead and approve these. Let's, let's get on top of the year this year, let's not, let's not fall behind.
Okay, do I have?
So, Mr. Chairman, the, when we discussed this in the middle of, of last year, it's weird to say last year, huh? Um, the, the idea was, let's move as much of this from just, um, kind of.
Microphone.
Okay.
Just close to me, just a minute.
Um, it move as much of this from, like, handshake deals, and, oh, you want it, you got it,
to actual, like, bid procedure, just like we did with the state court, um, a public defender, so that it becomes an apples-to-apples, this is what we want, this is what we expect, and then we know the, the quality of what we're getting, because we selected it as opposed to going, oh, it's just you. Um, and that goes with the I.T., that goes with, because I.T.'s very expensive, and the phone systems are very expensive. The phones, uh, it's my understanding, it's not replacing the actual phones, just someone who's helping us with the current phone system, like, if they go down or something. It's not necessarily replacing the phones, right, like, it's?
Uh, it will be the same type of phone, utilizing the same SIP, um, and it's opening up so that there are multiple bidders for this, the back office system, that's correct.
So the answer to your question is there will be new phones? He's not saying that they can utilize the phones that we have in our system.
Oh, they, they can, they can still utilize the same phones, they're still I.P. phones. Um, will there be an option to, uh?
Upgrade to a newer model.
Upgrade a newer phone? Yeah, just, just like we do for our iPhones, that would be an option for an upgrade.
So that's my concern about that, so, so my motion is that, um, instead that we extend the contract with Beck, Owen, and Murray for legal services, um, I mean, we can give it a date, but their contract runs with us annually, and everything else goes with our money, which is July. So hence, we should have been doing something with this in September. Um, so I just make a motion that we extend their contract until next year.
I'll second that.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion?
I, I think that we've, we've actually already started the RFP process, right?
We have.
And people are starting to bid, or the availability to bid is there.
That's correct.
I, I think it would be improper for us to just cut that off in the meantime and award a contract. Um, we've asked for bids, and awarding it middle of an RFP, because of the, RFP closes on the tenth. Like, I think, I think it's much more in order, I think it's gonna cause a lot less issues if we, uh, extend until February. Yes, I agree with Commissioner Flowers-Taylor that this should have been done sooner, and we were proking and prodding you. That said, I think we spent a lot more time on lost and other stuff that got in the way of, of moving this forward. So yes, I think this is a little behind, but, um, I think the, the proper thing to do is to wait until the RFP closes, we have all the bids, or, you know, or, or if we get no bids or only the one bid. Like, there's a, there's a period that we're currently in the middle of, if we cut that off early, like.
We can do it.
You just say, you can say that. We're not taking bids at this time, or we're not processing bids at this time.
I don't, I don't think we should, and so I'm, I'm against that.
I think this comes part with, of, of our territory, I hear what you're saying, but I think it comes part of our territory, what we're able to do, I mean, we're board of commissioners, I mean, we make these decisions, you know, so, I mean, we're, we're capable of doing it.
And we make contracts with people, and we didn't follow up on our end of the contract, just like we didn't follow up on your end of the contract. So you got your stuff fixed, there is no reason why we should treat the people who we have contracted with for, not that just because they've been here, they know us, and there's no reason to throw them out in the dirt without any warning. I mean, clearly, if they wanted to go back and said that we were in breach of our contract because we didn't notify them of that, I obviously was missing when y'all voted to put out the RFP for, for these, because I'm interested in who wrote the RFP.
We're.
Who, who wrote the RFP for attorney services?
The attorneys.
The attorneys, which attorneys?
The county attorneys.
Stephanie wrote the one for, um, the county attorney, and, uh, Mr. Galaway wrote the one for the zoning attorneys.
So I totally have a problem.
They were asked to do that, though.
Yeah, I, but I have a problem with that.
They were, they were based on, um, an, an RFP that was recently put out by Baldwin County, so it wasn't, wasn't just something that I.
No, it was boiler.
Came up with.
It was a little boilerplate.
There's a lot of boilerplate.
So, yeah, I'm just letting y'all know that this is raggedy. This is raggedy how we're doing it, we're not following our own procedures, sorry, Rita. It's not that big of a deal, it is, to me, it's not that big of a deal because we didn't do what we were supposed to do. So, that's my motion.
Again, I, I don't think that we're throwing anybody out, I think that, I fully expect Beck, Owen, and Murray have a robust bid and. I think that I fully expect Beck, Owen, and Murray to have a robust bid and it'd be the... You know, like, that's my expectation. But it's done in a public and transparent way as opposed to just like, hey, we're going to bid them out. Just kidding, we're not. We're just going to award the same people who've been doing it just as we decided we can. Yeah, we can. I think we owe it to our... To the electorate, to the citizens of Spalding County.
We're just extending it to next year. I mean, we're not... We're just extending it to next year. So they still can bid on it next year. I mean, we're not saying they can't bid. We're just extending the contract.
All right, where are we on the...
You have a motion and a second.
A motion and a second to extend it for the...
For a year. For a year.
For 23. All right, any more discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Three. All those opposed? Two. Motion carries. I think the issue that comes out of this is...
I believe that was just for number four, though.
Yeah, it was just...
If you want to do the same for Mr. Galaway.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I want to make sure that everybody understands we got to do better next year. Next year...
Please, don't, don't, don't. Just don't.
Okay. Extension of county zoning attorney contract. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve an extension until February.
All right, I have a motion to extend until February. Do I have a second?
Well, our first meeting in February, so...
First meeting in February.
And approve whatever the bid is.
Okay. I have a motion. Do I have a second? I'll second that. All right. All those... Any discussion?
Yes, absolutely. I feel like it's unrealistic for us to believe that that is going to be ready by February. But, of course, that's his motion. And I also feel that the contract for zoning and if there is a current agreement for human resources, they should have the same opportunity if we haven't notified them properly.
Absolutely.
So, yeah, that's just my comment, yeah.
They should be uniformed.
Okay, so we have... Any more discussion? All those in...
Now, when will that RFP close? The 10th as well?
That's correct.
Same time.
All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Three. All those opposed, like sign.
Okay, what are we agreeing to?
This is to extend the zoning attorney's contract.
Until February.
Until February the 10th.
This year.
Or the 8th.
Correct.
All right.
Okay, call for the question again, please.
All those in favor...
We just didn't... Hold on, I'm sorry. We all just voted.
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
We didn't understand the motion.
You had two that didn't vote.
When we said, I want to make sure...
All right.
It's February this year and not next year.
Yes, February of this year.
That is the motion.
All right.
All right, we're going to... Because we weren't sure of the motion, we'll vote again. All those in favor of extending the zoning until February? Raise your hand. Two. All those opposed? Three. All right, do we have a second motion on this?
I make a motion that we extend the county attorney's zoning... County zoning attorney contract until next year.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Three. All those opposed, like sign. Two. Motion carries. All right, item number six. Continue current agreement with the human... County Human Resource Attorney for calendar year 2023?
Motion to approve.
You said motion to approve?
Yes.
Okay, I have a motion to approve. Do I have a second? I'll second. Any discussion? This is different, isn't it?
Yes, it is different.
There is not an RFP for this. This actually goes through our...
So this is a pay-as-you-go?
It is. It's pay-as-you-go and it's through ACCG.
So we're just continue to...
We will continue to use the same attorney firm that we're currently using through ACCG.
James, did you make a motion?
Yeah, we made a motion and a second.
Okay.
All right, this is just to continue it. All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Five, zero. Presentation and proclamations, none. Citizen comments. Speakers must sign up prior to the meeting and provide their names, addresses, and topics they wish to discuss. Speakers must direct your remarks to the board and not to individual commissioners or to the audience. Personal disagreements with the individual commissioners or county employees are not a matter of public concern and personal attacks will not be tolerated. The chairman has the right to limit your comments in the interest of disposing of the county's business in an efficient and respectful manner. Speakers will be allocated three minutes to speak on their chosen topics as they relate to matters pertaining to the jurisdiction of the Board of Commissioners. No questions will be asked by any of the commissioners during citizen comments. Outbursts from the audience will not be tolerated. Common courtesy and civility are expected at all times during the meeting. No speaker will be permitted to speak more than three minutes or more than once unless the board votes to suspend the rule.
Mr. Chairman, no one has signed up to speak this evening.
All right. Item number eight, presentation of financial statements. There are none for tonight. Item number nine, minutes. Consider the approval of the minutes from the Spalding County Board of Commissioners' extraordinary session and executive sessions on December 19, 2022, and the Spalding County Board of Commissioners' special called meeting and executive session on December 22, 2022. Do I have a motion to approve?
I have a question, Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind.
Yes.
Are we... Is there some reason why we didn't get those last three or four meetings that we just came in and opened up and went into closed session? Is there some reason why we're not approving those at this time?
Because I just got the after agenda finished this afternoon.
Okay, that's... I mean, I just want to make sure that it wasn't something that...
We'll get them on the next time.
It'll come. Okay, thank you.
I haven't done the executive session yet at all.
Okay, because I knew that was three or four.
Yes.
Yeah.
All right.
All right, do I have a motion to approve?
Show move, Mr. Chairman.
I have a second.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Five, zero. Motion carries. Consent agenda. There are no items from the consent agenda for this evening. New business. Consider approval of a list of roadways on system and off system as established by the Georgia Department of Transportation. Dr. Ledbetter.
So this is an annual requirement through the Georgia Department of Transportation to highlight the length and width of all of the on and off system roads and to designate the speed limit for each of those roads. It is based on information that was put together by the regional or direct... The... Sorry, the district engineer for Georgia DOT and sent over to us for our consideration and approval. What you have before you is the 11 pages of roadways that account for the roads across our county. Also, if you notice, that there is an indication that the school zone speed limits are indicated on the road. But I would just reiterate that this is for speed limit purposes only. They... The information does not talk about any of the speed limit cameras that are associated with our school zones. You'll also note that the speed limits for different school zones are different. And that is based on a legal requirement that we had a conversation with Georgia DOT and we're told that they assess speed based on the 85th percentile of the vehicles that travel that particular road. And that's how they set the speed limit. We challenged that significantly with Georgia DOT and asked them to reconsider the speed limits for certain... Certain roads within our county, specifically around our school zones. And basically, we were told that there is a process that they follow. They examine each road and then they set the speed based on that 85th percentile. If it were up to me, all of our school zones would be 25 miles an hour. But as you can see from the information that you have in front of you, that's not how they did the study. This was an engineering study and they reiterated this was an engineering study and that they set the speed based on what they felt was the safest speed for each one of the areas. We completed this review back in September, but as this is January, they are... The Georgia DOT is putting us on the schedule so that we can get this back on our first meeting for January every year to review and approve the road study that they put together for us.
Is this... Dr. Ledbetter, is this the same documentation that we saw four months ago?
Yes, ma'am.
Except it has this in school stuff.
It's my understanding that the school stuff was on the previous one that indicated that the times would be from 60 minutes before the commencement of school and then from the exit of school, 60 minutes after the end of the day. They just highlighted that much more clearly on page two so that we have a clear understanding of what the school zone times are for the school zones.
All right, do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
All right, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Did I hear a second something?
Second.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Stephanie, what would you think would be the chances of us talking to our local G. dot rep about some of these speed limits? I mean, I'm just asking. Clearly, they're on the GSATC stand. They're here at the meeting.
I mean, I think certainly it could be a point of discussion, but as to whether or not you would get anywhere with it, I don't think you'd have any success.
I think we can ask for...
Uniformity.
To do another engineering study to see if it changes, but they're going to go by that metric that's set by the state, not like...
And the reason I say that is because I don't know that that metric includes how many accidents are there, how many near accidents are there, how many kids are in the area that is populated.
Nobody walks across 16 at Griffin High, but lots do in front of car.
Right, or across Jackson Road.
I think it's certainly worth having that conversation to ask them what are the metrics that you're studying in determining these numbers. Because those are things that they look at when they realign highways, like at County Line Road. They talked about the number of accidents that were there and...
What's the likeliness of any of this will change?
Slim to none.
Okay.
And if it does change, it's going to take...
But the only... We're approaching it through a back... We're going to try and approach it through a back door.
Sure, and the only way that you can ever effectuate change is by bringing the issues to the forefront.
At a different level. Okay.
All right, any more discussion?
I don't like that we're not a part of this decision that we're signing off on. I think that's silly. I think it's silly that they're bringing it to us to sign off on in general. Like, you know, don't ask my opinion. Then don't ask me to sign off on it. Like, if you're just going to do what you're going to do, then just go do it. Don't act like I did it. Because we're not doing anything tonight.
Like, Glenn asked the question, or maybe, James, you asked the question. What if we not do it? What happens?
Yeah, then GSP can't run radar.
It's an enforcement issue.
That's correct.
It's connected to G...
GSP and our state support.
Everything.
So it is truly unexpected rubber stamp from you.
Okay, that's all. I've had as many questions about that answer as I could.
Okay. Any more discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Five, zero. Motion carries. All right, now we're going to go through a series of appointments so everybody understands how they work. We have a book. People who are interested can be put in a nomination form. We put it into our book on each section and we work our way through the book in a chronological order. So the first in, we voted on first. It takes three votes to become appointed for us to have an appointment and then we move on. So everybody understands how the system works to be able to do that. There will be some times when I think we have no nominations in the book as we go through. All right.
And that's for board appointments. There's chair appointments that you just go, this is the guy. And there's also district appointments.
Yes.
We as individuals just go.
Yes, yes. I'll make sure there's three different types. All right. Number one, really number two, but number one, we're doing this way. Consider appointment to the Board of Appeals and Adjustments Unsafe Building Abatement Code to succeed Charles Penny for a four-year term ending December 31, 2026. Dr. Ledbetter.
Mr. Chairman, the first and only nomination in the book is Mr. Charles Penny.
All right, do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
All right, second?
Second.
All right, motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
We got to find two more people for this board, guys. This is a board.
Yes, all those in favor signify by raising your hand. Five, zero. The last time this board met was four years ago?
No, it was 10 years ago.
Yeah, it's been a minute.
Yeah, so it's at least four years ago, so...
And don't they meet like maybe one time or something, like...
Only when they have an issue that's not resolved by staff.
Yep, that's exactly right. So this is not something that meets routinely for us. Okay. Item number three. Consider appointment to the Griffin Spalding Chamber Commerce Board of Directors, Chairman or Designee to succeed Commissioner Rita Johnson for a one-year term ending December 31, 2023. Commissioner Johnson, would you like to continue to do that?
I would, and I'd also like to invite you all to the annual dinner, which is January 26. I like that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right. I'm therefore appointing you. Item B, to succeed the county manager, Steve Ledbetter, for a one-year term ending December 31, 2023. Dr. Ledbetter, would you like to consider continuing doing this?
I would be honored.
Would you want to do that? I'm asking. Would you want to do that? Would you want DeAndre to do it?
I would... DeAndre would be an awesome ad.
But he's there anyway.
He is. He is there.
I just have to just take a load off you.
That would be awesome. If he would be so inclined to appoint Mr. DeAndre Smith to that board, that would be awesome.
Okay.
We need a motion.
Oh, you would need a motion?
Okay, we can just motion him in?
Yes.
Motion to appoint DeAndre Smith as the...
Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors. Okay. Any more discussion?
There was a second.
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 Okay. All right, any more discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Five, zero. Way to go, DeAndre. All right, item number four. Consider appointment to the Council on Aging to replace Janie Clark for a three-year term ending December 31, 2025.
Mr. Chairman, the only nomination in the book is Ms. Janie Clark.
Do I have a motion to approve Janie Clark? All right, I have a motion. Do I have a...
Who put her name to?
I D K. She's a good one.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that she wants to do it again.
Yeah, yeah.
She has.
Yes, she put her name in the book, yes.
All right.
No, no.
That's really my only question with all these that we're reappointing is to make sure.
If there's a form in there, then they want to be.
Okay, cool.
If there's not a form.
Yeah, that's a... Okay. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Five, zero. Item number five. Consider appointment to the Griffin Downtown Council. Chairman Designee of Commissioner Rita Johnson. Would you like to continue to do that?
Which Main Street?
Yeah, let me... Let's talk about that because I know that... Are you able to make the noon meetings?
I can. It's a little easier for me because now I have to take two kids to skip from.
And I have got a question about... I'm putting it out publicly about Main Street. Do they still have their designation? Or do they lose that?
They're... I think they're on a probationary status this year. That's why Mr. K is no longer with us. And they're expecting to get it back this year.
They may need my help. Okay, sure.
All right, so...
So I'll take downtown.
All right, I'm hereby...
Eight o'clock meeting and yours is at noon?
I think it's 8:15.
Okay.
No, that might be 12:00.
I think you're right. It's 8:15.
All right, I'm hereby appointing...
Development Authority's aide.
Commissioner Dutton for one year to the Griffin Downtown Council. Consider appointment to the Griffin Main Street Advisory Board. Rita, would you like to do that?
I used to serve on the boards.
I hereby appoint... Commissioner Rita Johnson to the Griffin Main Street Advisory Board. Item number seven. Consider appointment to the Griffin Spalding Area Transportation Committee. Chairman Designee. Commissioner Bolden, is that okay for you to continue? All right, I'm hereby appointing Commissioner Bolden. Commissioner Gwen Flowers-Taylor, is that okay with you?
Ashley, no, I don't want to serve on that board.
Okay, tell me a little bit about this board. I mean, it was transportation. What is the...
It meets at 1:30, once a quarter.
Once a quarter.
It's once a quarter?
Once a quarter.
It is, and it's a full update of all of the transportation activities that go on across the county. And it's got Georgia DOT.
How long are the meetings normally? How long do they last normally?
It's long.
It's long.
Couple hours.
You could take that board back. She'll take it.
All right. Comish- Commissioner Dutton?
Come on, Gwen. Come on, Gwen. I, I don't, I don't know if I can, that's the problem. Is my one, like, a lunch meeting and like a before is something that's doable, but if I have court, I'll just. I mean, the mercy of judges, you know what I mean?
All right, we, we have Commissioner Bolden already there. So yes. All right, we'll push, we'll push you, Commissioner Dutton, and then if you can't make it, fine. Commissioner Dutton will continue to make it for us. All right, so I hereby appoint Commissioner Dutton. Point to succeed Chief Glenn Polk for a one-year term ending December thirty-first, twenty.
Can we do C through I as a block?
Yes. Can we do all of those at one time?
Do you have a problem?
I don't have a problem, okay.
That's fine.
Motion to approve. Chief Glenn Polk, Kelly Littlefield, Steve Ledbetter, Sheriff Daryl Dix, Bill Bryant, Frank Harris.
Bill Bryant does not, you, you would actually need to stop at F, because the citizens you would need to.
All right.
Okay, and then, and Sheriff Daryl Dix, so C, D, E, and F as a block.
All right, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion on those? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Five, zero. All right. To succeed Bill Bryant, who does not want to return. Is there anybody in the book for him, for this position?
The only person in the book is Mr. Frank Harris.
Okay.
And he's already, he's, he's H.
He's H.
He's next, and he does want to.
Yeah, he's, he's already on there.
I'm sorry, what'd you say?
He's already, he's the next one, he's already listed.
Yes.
Now, did he say he didn't wanna serve?
Yes.
I thought he said he did.
Frank does.
Bill Bryant does, but Frank Harris does.
But Bill doesn't.
Correct.
Right, Bill does not.
All right, so, uh, we're gonna be short a person there. Do I have a motion to approve Frank Harris and Todd Harris?
Slash Bruce Ballard.
Yes, who's the school district?
Oh, I see, I was like, wait, what?
Yeah, yeah, it's a school district.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Frank Harris and Todd Harris slash Bruce Ballard for one-year terms each, ending in December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, on the Griffin Spalding Area Transportation Committee.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any more discussion?
So what do we do with, what do we do with G? Are we just gonna leave that open right now?
Until we have somebody else in the vote.
Why do we need to have so many, by the way?
That's just a position, a citizen position for that particular committee that's provided for.
Does it have to be filled?
It should be filled, yes.
All right.
You, you have very few citizens represented on that committee, so.
All right. Item number eight.
You have a motion and a second, did you take a vote?
Oh, I'm sorry. All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Five, zero, thank you. Consider appointment to the Griffin Spalding Business and Tourism Association to suc- uh, to succeed Steve Ledbetter for the three-year term ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. Motion to approve. Do I have a motion to approve?
Is that correct? Because I thought as a, the man, as a manager, your term was annually.
I checked with the bylaws, because you were, you're also on that, and your, your term of office will end in twenty twenty-four. However, all of the appointments to this committee are three-year terms.
Okay, all right.
All right. Let's just go ahead and do all of them at one time, if that's okay? To succeed TJ Mberger, December thirty-one, twenty twenty-five. To succeed, uh, Gwen Flowers Taylor, three years, twenty twenty-five. To succeed Vera McIntosh for a three-year term ending thir- December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. And to succeed Bonnie Frognor for a three-year term ending December thirty-one, twenty twenty-five. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
All right, do I have a second? Any more discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Five, zero, thank you. Consider appointment to the Griffin Spalding Airport Authority to succeed Dennis Noel for a six-year term ending December thirty-one, twenty twenty-eight.
And he wants it again, right?
He does.
He's in the book? Okay.
He is.
Yeah, motion to approve Dennis Noel.
Yes, Dennis Noel is on the.
All right, I have a motion to approve Dennis Noel. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, it's the first, uh, ti- uh, primary, uh, motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Five, zero. To succeed James R. Dutton for a four-year term ending December thirty-one, twenty twenty-six. I'd like for you to stay on there.
Yes.
Okay.
Four-year terms?
It's the district, it's for the.
They run with your term of office.
Your term of office.
Cool.
Okay. All right. Do I have a motion to approve?
Wait.
Is that an appointment, or?
It's an appointment.
It's an appointment.
Okay.
Yes.
Then I hereby appoint, uh, Commissioner Dutton. Consider Griffin Spalding Development Authority to succeed Commissioner, uh, James R. Dutton for a period of one year, ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. Would you like to stay there?
Absolutely, absolutely.
All right, I have a motion, uh, appointment. I therefore, this is an appointment, right?
It is.
I therefore appoint Commissioner Dutton to stay there for one year. Commission, this is, uh, consider appointment to the Griffin Spalding Hospital Authority to succeed Eddie Grogan for a four-year term ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six.
Mr. Chairman, the only nomination in the book is Mr. Eddie Grogan.
Motion to approve Eddie Grogan.
All right. Do I have a motion and a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor signify by raising your hand. Five, zero.
And the other one is your appointment, right?
And I'm hereby appointing myself for a one-year term to the Hospital Authority. Consider appointment to the McIntosh Trail Community Service Board to succeed, uh, this, this is an appointment. Myself, I hereby appoint myself for a one-year term ending twenty twenty-three. And to see, to succeed Connie Klaffenstein for a three-year term ending twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-five.
Mr. Chairman, uh, Connie is the only one that's listed in the book for this position.
Motion to approve Connie Klaffenstein.
All right, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Five, zero. Consider appointment of, to the Spalding County Board of Health to succeed Johnny McDaniel for a six-year term ending December thirty-one, twenty twenty-eight.
Motion to approve Johnny McDaniel.
He's in the book?
He is in the book, yes.
All right, I have a motion, do I have a second? A motion and a second. Any discussion?
I do.
Yes.
I have a question.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, you sat, you sit on that board.
I, I do.
Who is the, the practicing physician on that board?
It's an appointment out of.
We do not have a practicing physician. We have a retired physician on the board. What's his name, Chu, Chu?
Chuning?
Yeah.
Chuning.
Dr. Chuning.
So, so.
And he's allowed to do that evidently if he is retired.
So, so that's what I'm saying, your bylaws at the health board say that that person, everybody who's elected on that board is elected for a reason. A practicing physician, there's supposed to be a person on that board that is a community or minority representative. And if I'm not mistaken, there are no people of color on that board. Am I correct?
From the community, Keith Simmons is on the board. Doctor, Doctor Simmons.
Doctor Simmons is a community representative?
I think he's a, I don't, I'm, I'm not sure.
I'm not sure.
Uh, he's not an appointee from us, but he's on the board. That's, uh, I think that's the only, uh, person of color.
Okay, I, I just, I, I just caution the fact that the rules are being bent, because clearly the charter says that you need a practicing physician. Which there was one on there, when Dr. Stool was on there.
I thought I saw her name in the book.
But she wasn't assigned as the practicing physician. So, so I, I just say to you, as a member of that board, it's important for, um, I don't know that Keith Simmons represents the community, but that's somebody else, but, yeah, I will definitely be looking at that to see who is actually in the positions that they're supposed to be in, in the health department, that helps to represent the entire community.
I, as I remember, we asked that question, and they went to, uh, DPH four and said, can it be a retired person? And then, yes, they said, came back, yes, so before we did that, but we can sure check again.
And I think Dr. Millie's on the DFAS board.
Oh, is she? I thought she was on the health.
Yes, DFAS.
I think she's on the DFAS board.
I thought I've ever seen it in there, yeah, okay.
Okay. All right, is, are we all through with that? Okay, all those in favor signify by raising your hand. Five, zero, thank you.
You're appointing yourself, right?
Yes, I'm appointing myself, if I didn't say that.
You didn't. Who seconded that motion for Mr. McDaniel?
I did.
Rita.
Okay, thank you. Consider appointment to the Spalding County Board of Zoning Appeals.
I, I think I have a name to replace our, our dearly departed Rob Pierrefoy. But he's not in the book yet, so I just gotta double check.
Okay.
But I think I have a name, if y'all bear with me, I'll, I'll try to get that filled out.
All right.
I think his father passed. This is the son.
Yeah, this is the son.
Oh.
I knew that, I was just kidding.
Just checking.
Does he, does he wanna re?
He hasn't responded.
He, he did not respond.
That's what I meant, I'm sorry.
Okay. So, motion to approve. Motion to approve the, uh, appoint, reappointment of Mr. Ed Brown?
No.
Nope.
He, he passed, I think.
Oh, Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Okay, yeah.
See, that, see, this is my computer.
All right, who's in the book?
Uh, so we have two people in the book for.
Um, these are district appointments, though.
Yes, um, but the, the one that has been signed off is Mr. Douglas Hardwick.
If you all, if you all remember, he was the chairman, uh, years ago of our zoning appeals.
I do not have a, I do not have.
Douglas Hardwick. I don't, I never even heard of him.
He came to me and said, uh.
District five, is that district five?
Yes, he's my, he's my appointment, but he was, uh, he came to me and he said he had been the chairman of the zoning appeals board, uh, years ago. But he's my appoint, he's my appointment.
And he wants to do it.
Yes, so, uh, two and four, districts two and four need bodies. Okay. There's nobody else in the book.
I'm gonna check one more. Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
So we don't have a two and a four?
Yes, we need, we need an, uh, district two appointment and a district four appointment.
Right.
And I will put these on the next agenda, on the one in February.
Okay. Consider appointment of the Spalding County Collaborative Authority for Family and Children.
Before you go ahead, so did we not take a vote for Mr. Doug Hart?
You don't have to, because it's a district five appointment.
Ah, okay, so, so it's just everybody's stuff?
Yes.
Okay, sorry.
It's okay, better safe than sorry. All right. Who's in the book for the Spalding County Collaborative Authority?
Jewel Walker.
Yep, Ms. Jewel Walker Harps. Is that it?
Well, Irma is the.
Sheriff's Department.
Sheriff's Department representative. So we just have to reappoint her, and then Rita.
Is your designee?
Okay.
And, and yes, Ms. Jewel is the only one in the book.
Okay. Commissioner Johnson, would you like to continue to do that?
I always get confused when they meet. I mean, for whatever reason, I haven't really been attending, that's the only thing, and I don't really feel like I'm being a, a good representative of us.
I'll let you know when they meet and when.
Oh, thank you, Kathy.
Okay. I appoint Commissioner.
Unless DeAndre wants it, I'm kidding.
I appoint Commissioner.
You are wrong.
Johnson, okay?
I'm gonna roll here.
Motion to approve, uh, Ms. Jewel Walker Harps.
Okay. I have a motion and a second, any more discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Five, zero.
Motion to approve Irma Loos.
Okay, I have a motion to approve.
As the Sheriff's Department's.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Five, zero. Consider appointment to the Spalding County Department of Family and Children Services Board.
Motion to approve Mildred Stuhl, she's in the book.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second, any more discussion?
And she's a doctor, Dr. Stu.
She was, she was retired now.
Doctor, she's in it, she gets to keep the rest of her life.
All right, all those in favor signify by raising your hand.
Absolutely.
Five, zero. Consider appointment to the Spalding County Ethics Review Panel. Remember, this is where you have three from each one of us. We put them in the hat, we draw them out when the time comes, if we have the time to do that.
That has completely changed, Mr. Chairman. Completely changed with our new ethics ordinance.
Oh, that's right, we did change that.
Yeah, we did change that.
Okay, so, Mr. Chairman, I don't have my appointment.
Yeah, 'cause the, the metrics are new.
You want me to go over the criteria, so y'all can be thinking about what those, those are? A resident of Spalding County, a registered voter, computer literate, computer literate and able to provide a valid email address, not an employee of the county or a covered official, or any immediate family member of an employee of the county or covered official, not an officer or employee of any political party, not an elected official in the county, and not a candidate for office in the United States, state of Georgia, or Spalding County, and has not held any elected office during the three months immediately preceding the appointment, not a member of any board or authority appointed by the Board of Commissioners. The ethics panel shall consist of five randomly selected members from a list maintained by the ethics panel clerk. And the members will serve from, they can serve for successive one-year terms if randomly selected from the list. We are to maintain a list of not less than nine, nor more than fifteen qualified individuals to draw, um, from for ethics panels. They can be, but don't have to be, a member of the Spalding County Bar Association, a member of a local military organization, the executive director or board member of a nonprofit organization with an office in Spalding County, interested citizens who have requested to be considered for service on the panel, or a member of the clergy with a church located in Spalding County. What I would suggest that you do to fill these is first, um, send out a notification basically asking for, for interested people to apply and just provide those qualifications.
That sounds good.
I'll give it to you.
I would like to make a motion to table the appointment to the Ethics Review Panel until our next official meeting.
All right, I have a motion to table. Do I have a second?
A second.
All right, all those in favor signify by raising your hand.
Can I ask a question? You know, we've already-
Go ahead, yes.
Now, you may have said this, but are, do we individually select a few or is it just, we just?
I, I, it's not, it's not said in the, in the ordinance exactly how those, those members have to be chosen. I think you just need to agree on a number and it can be between nine and fifteen. If you wanted to keep it at, I think we went up to fifteen so that you could keep it at three each, yes.
Suggested names.
Okay.
We all should have input in there, but we shall have our.
Just to make sure, Kathy, you have my three names, right?
We do.
All right, item number eighteen, consider appointment to the Spalding County Parks and Rec Advisory to succeed Keith Kenneth Hesters.
These are district appointments.
Mr. Chairman, I will just reappoint both my appointments, Mr. Kenneth Hester and Tyrone Ward, for two-year period.
All right.
That's just an appointment.
Yeah.
That's, uh-
And I, I know that I have one name, I'm surprised that she's not in the book. Uh, I, I thought she was. Uh, so I'll get that information and I'm almost certain I've got a second, so.
We'll put him back to the next, okay.
So, let me just ask you, is it the same people that volunteered to come? Okay.
All right, uh, I, Commissioner-
Mine, I want to, Beth Horn and Zachary Holmes. So, yeah, so they both wanna do it.
All right, uh, district four?
Yeah, both Reece Simmons and TJ McDaniel.
All right, uh, district five, Peter Phelps and Byron Pierce are both mine. I'm reappointing them. And Commissioner Gwen Flowers-Taylor, would you like to do that for one more, one more year?
I absolutely would love to.
All right, I hereby appoint Commissioner Gwen Flowers-Taylor. Thank you. Uh, item nineteen, consider appointment to the Spalding County Personnel Appeals Board to six, who's in the book?
First up is, nominee's name is Robert Parker.
That's for Dan McLean.
I'm sorry, please forgive me, Dan McLean.
Dan McLean does not want to be reappointed.
Right, so Robert Parker is taking his place.
Okay, is that the only one on the board, in the book?
He's the only one in the book.
Okay.
Is that the Robert Parker that's on the Development Authority?
Frank Harris' son-in-law.
Okay.
Okay, moving on. Consider appointment to the-
Do we need to vote?
Yes.
Motion to approve the appointment of Mr. Robert Parker for a three-year term to expire on December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five to serve on the Spalding County Personnel Appeals Board.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Five zero.
You have another position on that board, is there?
There's no one else in the book.
Yes.
Don't take a look.
All right, consider appointment to the Spalding County Planning Commission.
Get a motion to table that appointment.
Motion to table the second appointment.
Thank you.
Yeah, second. That's Mr. Kelly, right?
It is.
Okay.
Okay.
And you need a, a vote, please, sir.
All right, do we have a motion and a second? All right, all those in favor signify by raising your hand. Five zero. All right, uh, consider appointment to the Spalding County Planning Commission to succeed Bruce Ballard, district two appointment.
It's matter of saying that Bruce wants to be on it again. That's correct, and he is in the book. All right, I'll, I'll reappoint Bruce.
Okay, uh, my appointment should be in the book, Mary Louise Upshaw.
That is correct.
I, I hereby appoint Mary Louise Upshaw, uh, to the, to that board, that commission. All right, consider appointment to the Spalding County Water and Sewerage Facilities Authority to succeed Fannie Delaney for a six-year term to expire thirty-one December, twenty twenty-eight.
Mr. Chairman, Mr., uh, Ms. Fannie Delaney is in the book as a nominee and she is the only one in the book.
All right, I, I put her in. I put her in.
Motion approved.
All right, I have a motion to have-
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Five zero. This, reapportment of Commissioner Flowers-Taylor to the Water Authority.
I would be great, grateful to serve on that.
Thank you, you're hereby appointed. Item number twenty-two, consider appointment to the Three Rivers Regional Commission Board of Directors. Commissioner Flowers-Taylor, you're currently the designee. Would you like to continue to do that?
Yes.
All right, I hereby appoint Commissioner Flowers-Taylor. Consider appointment to the Two Rivers R.C. and D Council. Commissioner Dutton, you're currently, you'd like to do that. I hereby appoint Commissioner Dutton and the alternate member to succeed Danny Meadows.
Uh, there's no one in the book. Did you hear back from Mr. Meadows?
No, I didn't, but you said that's-
Yeah, I believe Danny is still interested in serving in that capacity. Should we? We can table it and bring it back, that'll be perfectly fine. Table to wait to hear back from him officially.
Yes.
Yes. Motion, motion to table.
All right, I have a motion, all right.
Until February.
Yes.
So, until the first meeting.
All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Five zero. Uh, consider appointment to the West Central Workforce Investment Board. Uh, oh, I hereby appoint myself-
It must be.
Uh, to the West Central Workforce Investment Board. Item number twenty-five, consider appointment of a business representative to the Three Rivers Regional Commission Board of Directors. This is a shared position where the city appoints in the even years and the county appoints in the odd years. The city appointed, uh, Mr. David Johnson in twenty twenty-two. I understand he would like to be reappointed.
That is correct.
Okay.
Motion approved, David Johnson.
I have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in, any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Five zero. Item number twenty-six, consider extension of the Judicial Alternatives Contract for Probation Services to the super-
Superior.
Superior, excuse me, Superior and State Courts through the end of the first quarter, twenty twenty-three.
Mr. Chairman, I have had extensive conversations with, uh, both Judge Sams and with Judge Thacker, and they have asked specifically that we review the contract in whole with, uh, the county attorney and that they have an opportunity to lean into the contract. Uh, I've spoken with Judicial Alternatives and they are very much aware of our request. They have resubmitted just an extension for their contract through the end of first quarter. Stephanie has reviewed that contract and we would ask that, uh, we have the opportunity to meet with all parties concerned with respect to our probation, specifically with Judge Sams, Judge Thacker, and our county attorney to bring back to you for consideration how to move this contract forward. Lots of conversation needs to go on between now and the time that we review this contract and I will be more than happy to answer any questions.
But all, but all good stuff.
All good stuff.
Why, why are we, why are we extending just to the end of the first quarter? What, what's gonna happen within ninety days?
I asked specifically, um, that question to Judge Sams and Judge Thacker and they both believe that there will be enough information that we will be able to examine just within January to provide you with some, uh, information on how to restructure this contract moving forward. Uh, they had some concerns about the contract, specifically about some issues that they have from their previous experience, not with judicial alternatives, but with the probation contracts in general across the district. And they wanted to make sure that those concerns were addressed in the contract before we signed it.
Okay, so, so the contract is between the judges-
No, the contract is between us and Judicial Alternative Solutions.
Okay, I'm, I'm just, yeah, not really knowing. I mean, you say there's a lot of stuff to be, to be dealt with, but-
It, it's all good stuff.
All right.
All right, do I have a motion to approve till, through the first quarter?
What about the, what about the budgeting for this? We budgeted into July for this.
We did, and that's a part of the discussion that we're having with Judicial Alternatives is that they're wanting to go up significantly on their, uh, their budget requirements. But again, this does not come out of our general fund budget. This, uh, budget comes from the probationers. They pay for this service. But we wanna make sure that everyone is treated fairly. Uh, we wanna make sure that we're looking at this from a district perspective instead of just a county-by-county perspective. There really is some good things that are gonna go on, on the backside. We did not receive Judicial Alternatives contract until December and we started the discussion with Judicial Alternatives to make sure that we could extend through the end of first quarter after I had a discussion with Judge Sams and Judge Thacker.
So, their contract is ended December thirty-first?
That is correct.
Okay.
And I think they, because they're coming at us with an increase, they're more amenable to, to this extension.
Okay, motion to approve the extension of the Judicial Alternatives Contract for Probation Services to Superior Court and State Court through the end of the first quarter of twenty twenty-three.
Thank you.
All right.
I have a second.
All right, motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Five zero. Old business, there is none. Report from the county manager.
Just a few things, Mr. Chairman. Uh, severe weather is moving into our area this evening. In fact, we're currently under a tornado watch until nine P.M. Please be weather aware and if you're, if you're not signed up for the Civic Plus app through Spalding County, please do so. Uh, it affords us the opportunity to get weather alerts for what's going on within our community. Uh, if you don't know how to do the sign-up for this service, uh, please visit our website or our social media sites and, um, they will be more than happy to, uh, to lead you through how to sign up for, for this service.
Civic Ready?
Yes, ma'am. Uh, in fact, if you go over to our fire headquarters in the parking lot, there is a sign that's right by the, the fire headquarters that talks specifically about us being a civic-ready community. Uh, and it will help us all get connected to this app as well.
The Sheriff's Department has a, some kinda alert system too, right?
They do.
So, I'm looking at this app and you can help me, DeAndre.
Civic Plus.
Okay. Is it Civic Plus or Civic Ready?
It says Civic Plus here. And it's, cause there's a Civic Ready and a Civic Plus app.
Okay, cause I was just looking at the ratings and it's kind of low. Is that because not a lot of people aren't signed up?
Yes, ma'am.
That's it. And it has lifestyle. You sure this is the right one?
Okay.
Civic Plus is the old one.
So, I'm just saying that when we, I, I can't remember if you were here or not, Steve. When we went to the other one-
Yes.
We literally had the fire department at grocery stores, at Walmart, everywhere people were and they were assisting them in signing up for this.
Yes, ma'am, this is, this is that same program.
Right, but I'm just saying, we need more.
I love your thinking. Yes, ma'am, let's see if we can't get, uh, our fire department more engaged about helping our community get signed up. Uh, this afternoon, Spalding County received notice by the, uh, from the Georgia Department of Community Affairs that, uh, we have been approved for our service delivery strategy, so our scorecard has turned green. Uh, we are still waiting for the final green dot on our scorecard for our capital improvement element and it is still under review, so as soon as that gets, uh, approved off, we will bring that back to you for consideration on what the, the rates for our impact fees are gonna be. Uh, thank you to the City of Griffin again for the work completed to meet our deadline for our lost renegotiations last Friday. Uh, and then Friday, January the twentieth, uh, the Board of Commissioners is planning for our annual retreat. Staff is working diligently to finalize the details for the retreat and we'll share more by the end of this week to include the loc, the location and our pre-read material and agenda. Uh, with that, Happy New Years. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Johnson?
Um, in speaking, um, in the lost negotiations, you know, Friday was just an incredibly interesting morning day. But I have to say, I couldn't be more proud of our team. You know, I mean, I think we worked diligently well together and that's all of us. I mean, it's, you know, Stephanie, for your work in this, Kathy, definitely you, Steve, our chairman, our vice chair who came up with the rabbit at the end, uh, all, the three of us, Commissioner Flowers-Taylor, definitely at the very beginning of these negotiations, Commissioner Ryan also, you know, you and I kinda stuck with that sixty forty. You know, but you know what? It, it all came together and worked for the benefit of this, of this group. And I think we can still maintain a pretty decent relationship with the city all, all the while, so, um, great work. It was just awesome. Tiring, but awesome. As we're going through these appointments, you know, I, I remember us maybe having some type of appointment luncheon or something with some of the people we've appointed. We said we're gonna do this annually. Are we gonna continue to consider doing this, correct?
Yes, the, um, the all boards day-
Yes.
Was successful and-
Right.
It is something that we wanna continue to do.
Open records, all the stuff that they need to do.
We will just, if we, it was, it was successful. Um, however, we need to get more people there, you know? So, I mean, now that we know that we need to do this, not sure when, probably when all of our appointments are filled, you know, that we need to start working on getting those names out there.
And I, I do think that, um, personal asks from the commissioners that have appointed certain people showing an expectation that they actually attend because I think there are some people who've been on boards for many, many years and that doesn't mean that they don't need to attend.
Sure. Even we. Last thing, um, gonna miss the MLK parade this year, which is, I hate that, but I'm not gonna be in town and I believe we do not have any other meetings this month, but there is gonna be a parade, I'm sure, right?
Yes.
We've got a zoning meeting.
I'm not gonna be there for it.
The twenty-sixth.
That's it.
We've got a zoning meeting.
Oh.
The twenty-sixth, I think.
The twenty-sixth, okay.
Okay, just make sure, so we don't miss.
Okay, correct. All right, thank you, that's it.
Thank you. Commissioner Baldwin?
As for all of us, probably about the last month and a half has been a blur. It's probably been the most stressful, worst time to be sitting in this seat. I feel, I feel sorry for the people that's gonna be sitting here in twenty thirty-two. We need to start these negotiations at least twenty twenty-eight. I mean, if we're gonna negotiate, let's do it then and just don't wait till the last minute because this was just, I know it was an overflow for you dealing with family and all and it's just, it was rough. Code enforcement, I know I told Steve at the, the meeting in the beginning of December, I'd like to have something by this time. I know he had a lot on, on his plate, so I'm gonna kinda let it slide. I plan on trying to meet with, uh, the sheriff or Tony Thompson, try to come up with something just to get us, uh, get the backlog cleared up. Cause I know I'm getting a lot of calls and recalls and they're starting to get a little ticked off cause I'm giving them the same answer. Um, so we gotta come up with something, at least get us through. And with that, you answered my other two questions. I'm good.
Commissioner Flowers-Taylor?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, um, I would like to say that I'm happy that loss is over, but one of the things that I realized about loss is that I have to let people be where they are. Um, and what I mean by that is that if, if, I believe, and I have believed this, that the city has done us dirt the time, the eighteen years that I've served on the board and that's in my relationship, you know, with the county in general, with the water authority. So, there's nothing that anybody is going to say that's gonna change how I approach, how I deal with them. And that's, and it should be okay. And on this, by the same token, the people, there are people at the city who believe the exact same thing, that we've screwed, I don't know if that's a bad word, but anyway, we've messed over them all of these years, so you can't change that. What I do see going forward is that somehow we need to get the message to our legislature that they need to do better. You, you can figure out how to go in and, and put all kinda stuff in your phone and scan your, your concert tickets, but you can't come up with a standard that is objective and objective criteria so that these kinda negotiations don't end up like this. I mean, I'm pissed off because what I've seen over these last eighteen years that is that every ten years, the state pits the cities against the counties. And what happens with us, or what I've seen happen with us, it takes us three or four years to get caught back up because we can't even sit in the same room. I have not come here and been, and been on this board for this many years to leave out with this. Is there gonna be any conversation with the city? I, I think we need to give them a modicum of space to be angry. I, I think that's authorized. Um, and also for us to just remember, no matter how we feel like we didn't get what we deserved, when you look at the ticket, we won. We don't think we did, but, but, but you see what I'm saying? So, somebody lost. And I just hope that we can figure out a way to accept each other's disagreements but to certainly realize that the principle of what we're trying to do is so much bigger than our personality conflicts. I have faith in this board. I have faith in the city board because I believe that they also want the best for this community, but we just need to recognize that we're broken right now. We are, we're broken. Our relationship as a board, several of our personal relationships are just being trashed. And, and I can say that because my sister is on the city commission board, my daughter's on the commission board, we were able to disagree about this and not break up. And I, and I, and I think that that stands up to the fact of how everybody else's behavior is being reflected. Just disagree. And, and, you know, so, I mean, I have stuff I gotta work on myself. I know that that's my own stuff that I bring to the table, but at the end of the day, I always know that I wanna do what's best for Spalding County. So, um, so, yeah, just, you know, tread lightly. I say to anyone, tread lightly with the city. We have to give them space to be able to, um, you know, go through because we would be doing the same thing if we were on the other end. Code enforcement, I'm just so, I don't, I don't even know what to do. I'm, I'm, I'm over here with you. I'm, do I need to go out there and get my niece and my nephew and let's go and pick up some trash? Because there is a smorgasbord of stuff that people are doing because they know we don't have code enforcement. They're clearing land, they're trying to build houses, they're staying in campers, hooked up electricity to them. What? Can't nobody come and say nothing to them, so, you know, my, my thing going into twenty twenty-three is we have got- What? Can't nobody come and say nothing to them? So, you know, my, my thing going into 2023 is we have got to fix code enforcement. I don't know how we're going to do it, but clearly, we not, not only need to think out of the box, we need to think out of the town. Because this is a major problem for us, and everything that we've done to build up the beauty or whatever it is that we want people to be attracted to in Spalding County is just being dumped on. So, so yeah, for me going into the retreat, that is going to be huge. Trash all over the county. I, you know, I know Public Works has been busy putting up Christmas decorations and cutting down trees and all the other stuff they had to do in December. But we have got to get our roadways cleared up, and we've got to figure out, I don't know if, if we need to do it as a community, and that may be an idea. I'm not the idea person. We have got to figure out to how to help people to understand that they need to help us to keep the community clean. I think that's, that's all I, I had to say. I'm very glad that this is over. I just hope that we can, we can get our stuff together. We can recover quickly enough that we're not left behind other counties in the state, because we can't talk to each other. That's all I got.
Vice Chairman?
I want to bounce off some stuff that, that Gwen just said. I, I agree, the trash is a problem, and I think that if we, just like we have with other things, I think if we increase the first time fine, the most we can, I think that'll encourage, and then, and then talk to the judges, hey, we, we've set the fine at this, please enforce this fine. I think they'll be willing to do it. I think the Sheriff's Department will be more willing to write some tickets. And, you know, I think we can go up, I, I know we can go up to 1,000. I think we can go up to 1,200.
And Judge Kavanaugh will, she's, she's very anti-litter. She will absolutely enforce.
I mean, right now, I think the first fine is like $150. Like, people are out there dumping dump trucks full of stuff, like, and I think it should be per piece of trash, but I'm a little draconian about it. I, I think that if you're dumping litter, you throw a cigarette butt out the window, like, you're a barbarian that shouldn't live in society, so. But I get that I'm a bit draconian when it comes to that, but it starts with us. None of that stuff's going to change. We can preach and, you know, check our fists in the air as much as we want, but I, I think we should look into actually changing the ordinance and actually starting this process to really crack down on it. I mean, code enforcement's going to help, but like, code enforcement writing $150 ticket versus $1,000 ticket, boy, a couple people get $1,000 tickets. People want stuff thrown out trash. And the same thing with lost. You know, the, the state can come with a facts-based, study-backed, you know, information packet that I have to sign when it comes to all these numbers on speed zones and school zones and how far and where and what, and yet, they, they let the lost negotiations go like they do. You can't tell me that's not designed to pit us against each other, so that we don't get mad at them when they do stuff. So that process needs to be improved, because clearly, they have the ability to do better. And yet, they're not. So I want to, I want to turn to some, some good stuff, give a, congratulations to the Georgia Bulldogs. Excited for the next big game coming up. But as a GSU alumni, I got to say go State, so one day, we'll, we'll play them and we'll be essentially a bi-week for them, so. Although we beat Georgia Southern, so that's, that's the important game for us.
You beat Tennessee.
That's right, that's right. Thank you, thank you, thank you. And we have a good time doing it. The animal shelter is in need of everybody's help right now. We, if you have some more room in your heart, don't go to a, you know, a breeder. Go to our, we have some really awesome, super cute dogs in there that are looking for a home. And even if you can't take home one, go and just play with them. They'll let you take them out one at a time. They want you to do that, because it socializes that dog, so that when somebody else comes in, that dog's not barking and freaking out because they're in a cage, they're like excited, oh, good, this human's going to come and take me on a walk, and I would love. So that gives them a better chance of coming home with somebody else. And the same is true for the cats. If I wasn't even thinking about it, it's making my eyes water. I'm so allergic to cats. Like, I would sit in that cat room and just play with cats all day. Like, and it, it counts as community service hours. So if you need community service, like, your community service can go, go play with a pile of cats. Like, are you kidding me? It was the best community service ever. So please, 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 please. You know, our community can step up there. I mean, what a great day of just going and playing with cats and dogs. Come on. And you know, we're not talking about cleaning up after them. We have other people that actually clean up after them. You just got to go play with cats and dogs. What a horrible punishment. But you know, take one home if you can.
Right, that's what I'm afraid of.
Right, that's, that's the trick. See, look at how cute this cat is.
A puppy needs a friend.
Hey, we, you know, I rescued that one cat, and my wife got a second one, and I went, ah, here it comes. Now floodgates, we're about to have 40 cats, and I'm so glad that they have two. Those two cats just play all day long, just chasing each other, having a great time, and if there was just the one, he'd be sitting there bored, so. The last, and, and most importantly on this list, the Marley the King Day Parade is coming up. If you can make it, please, please, please come. This is a wildly, wildly important day for the history of our country and the history of this, this whole planet. And I want to challenge everybody. I like to do this about once, uh, once a quarter at least, if not more. I've got it on my phone. If you haven't listened to the full-length I Have a Dream speech lately, go and do it again. It's amazing, amazing, amazing. And if, like, I, I'm not, I'm not kidding. That's my favorite monument in Washington DC. I, every year before COVID, I would lead a, a college group on a nighttime tour of the National Mall. And we'd sit there with a Bluetooth speaker, and I'd, I'd sort of kind of explain, hey, this is what he's talking about in his speech, and then we'd listen to it, and then we'd discuss it. And then you go from there to the Lincoln Memorial and read the Gettysburg Address. And if you haven't listened to it, do it. It's awesome. It's awesome. And you can clearly tell that man was inspired by God, so. That's all I've got.
Remind everybody that our annual personal disclosure statements, the site is opened up. You have till June to get it done. You got to do it annually.
What is this now?
Personal Financial Disclosure Statement.
Oh, with the elections stuff?
You have to do it, you're supposed to do it, excuse me, you're supposed to do it annually for every elected official. That's us. It just opens up until June. You got to have it done.
It, it's like how much you spent on the.
Campaigns.
Campaign, it's the campaign stuff.
Yeah, different than the campaign money, like I just turned, but it's a different.
It's your personal liabilities and stuff like that.
What do you own? What do you own? Are you a $5,000 owner in a business and things like that that you have to check off? It's 10 pages, but it's just check a block and do it. And there's a whole website on it. Just want to make sure all of us stay out.
Doing your job, Kathy.
All of us stay out of trouble.
Yeah, send us a link to it.
Okay.
I can, I can find the link. Can send it to you.
On 20th January, when we come to think, I'd like for everybody to take, money's going to become a big issue. I'd like for everybody to take some time to think about what are three services that you think can be reduced? Start thinking about it now on 20, when we, we're going to get into some tough times with money, and this is the easy way to start with it and say, all right, what are three services that we provide that we think could be, it doesn't mean eliminated, just reduce down, money savings somewhere. So start thinking about them.
When do you need these back?
No, no, bring them on the 20th.
Oh, bring them to the 20th.
Yeah, just, I think everybody needs to look at it and say, hey, and if we bring in three, okay. I, today, there was a meeting with the Board of Elections where our local, most of our local legislators were at. Marty, David, and Karen. And I mentioned to them about lost. And they all said, yep, that was bad. It's going to be due in another 10 years. I, I'm not too sure that they got the emphasis of what we want to do. I, I think we need to think through, do we need to do a resolution to send to them to show how important it is, and we want them to do something about it? Now, it would be ideal probably if we could have the city and the county agree on one resolution, and we send it to them, and they take it, and they start the study group or whatever's got to be done. We got plenty of time for them to get. But a couple of them looked at me and said, do you think I will be here in 10 years? And I said, yep, but you got to do it now for us, for those that.
You can't do it in 10 years.
Yes, so.
Mr. Chairman, I, I think you could, based on my conversations over the last month, I, I think you could get a huge joint resolution with other cities and counties, not just us.
I mean, state across the state.
Take some time, let's put something together, because we want to get it to them, so they feel some kind of pressure to be able to do something. If not, they're in the midst of trying to do what they're doing.
It's not an emergency for them.
And I think it's important enough to send that not just to them, but to everyone in our legislature and Governor Kemp. It's.
Can ACCG get involved in any of this?
Absolutely. ACCG is actually involved from the perspective of asking local legislators to stand up a study group. Talked with Bill Toomey earlier in, well, last week, and he specifically indicated that they were going to ask for the study group to be stood up the first day of the new session.
Well, I, I agree with Stephanie. I think us letting other counties know, because everybody, even if you settled your stuff early, you still got mad.
Yep.
You know, so, so we, I think we.
We know 30 of them that at the very end, we're still fighting it out.
How many didn't settle?
I've not heard the last count. I did talk with Heather earlier today, us and anyway, Heather was the one that indicated that they finally settled as of Friday morning, but I've not heard the last count of who did not settle. So it's my intent to get that from everybody. There were 10 as of Friday morning that had not settled. And the ACCG was working with two of us late Friday afternoon to help us get across the finish line, and I did not hear about the other eight.
So we need to do something where they have a piece of paper that they say.
That says that this is how it did us, and, and I'm, I'm sure as Stephanie said, any other governmental entity in 159 counties had the same experience.
And the states paying to have things like the Archway Partnership Program, the Carvinson Institute, like, works to make cohesion, and then on the other, with the other hand, like smashing it, so.
Last, yeah, last comment, same thing you all have said. Extremely pleased with us specifically being able to work through lost. We changed direction. We talked about it. We were able to do it. Extremely pleased the diversity of thought that we had was really powerful. Different people coming in from different directions, saying things. I was happy the way we were able to listen to each other and say, I don't agree with that, but yeah, I understand the point of view. That's a sign of good cohesion, and I was afraid that we saw some people being blindsided. And it never, ever happened with us. We were never even close to that, so I talked about that. One of the things, the last point I'd like to make is that for the first time in a couple of years, I had some people walk up to me and say, I want to talk about consolidation.
Wow.
They said, this shows us that maybe we want to have consolidation back up again, because we saw how ugly it could get, and we don't want to see that ever again. So I mentioned that to. As a think, yeah, as a think piece, because if we think, yep, we start off and say, yep, that's what we want to do, we can get others involved in it.
To really know what that really means, too.
And, you know, if someone had actually told us, y'all are going to get mad with each other. I mean, 10 years from now, some of y'all might be sitting here, but the new people are going to come in and have to go through this same craziness, and how will we let them know that it's going to be crazy, if it's not changed?
You remember when Terrence came in? We were not always as close as we are right now. Terrence came in and did a lot for us over a period of time to get that cohesion, so that we're ready to go. I think we have to do that same kind of thing as a high, a little higher step. And probably by the time we get that worked out through Archway, to be able to do it, is enough time for everybody to take breaths, so that we can come to grips with it. But I think it needs to be done. We can't fight alone and win. We've got to fight together. The issues are with money, with people's influence, with people's direction.
Our collaboration will go to fight it right in.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, Chuck, Angel, Brittany, and I have already scheduled a meeting for 3:30 on Thursday to talk about ways Archway can help us move, move forward. And so if you have anything that you would like for me to take with me to that, any words of wisdom you'd like for me to take with me to that meeting, please just let me know.
Let me take an opportunity to take a second here to talk about Archway. When I first came here, I got lucky enough to be asked to go to Athens to, before we had Archway, and it was ugly. We got on the bus to go there, big blue at that time, and the people that were on the bus sat long way from each other. You did not go and sit on the bus with somebody else when we got there. When we got in the room, you did not sit at a table that didn't have your group with you. And we were not close knit. We worked Archway for years to be able to do what was important to us, which was communication. Other Archway counties do different things. They work just on a project, and then they stop, and then they work on another project. Ours has always been us talking, us communicating, us staying close together. I can't imagine how bad it would have been if we had not had Archway to be able to pull us together earlier. So this is really, really important. We've got to continue to talk, work together. But like Commissioner Flowers-Taylor says, you got to give people time to breathe, grieve, whatever words you want to use to, all right, let's get ready to go again. Even in the divorce issues, when you try to do that, you got to give them the time. All right, anything from the attorney?
Other than that, no.
Anything from the county clerk?
No.
Anything from the new member of the chamber?
Motion to adjourn.
All right, I have a motion to have a second. I have a motion to second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Five zero. We're adjourned. Thanks, everybody. We have some work to do to get people onto our board. Boards.
Thank you.
I'll remind them about the board meeting.
Thank you.
You know, the members of the people coming on to serve on our board.
Appointment, appointment.